And to connect.
Okay.
Great. Welcome to the August seventh Plan and Commission meeting. First thing on the agenda is the approval of amendments that are in your package. Any concerns with that?
I'll make those first.
What's that?
I'll make this first.
Second?
The second, any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? So moved. Jeff, you have anything?
No.
Jeff? Liz?
No.
Danny?
No, sir. Thanks.
Okay, moving on. Bruce?
Yes, sir.
Darnielle Fieldcase?
Very good. I had one that was going to be reheard, a Weaver case that's been withdrawn for the month. VR eight forty-two is an application submitted by Michael Karp for a variance to allow the construction of a single-family residence to within seven feet of the side property lines. The property is located at nineteen nine seven six Garrett Highway, tax map fifty-eight, parcel two sixty-one, grid sixteen, and is owned town center. It's a very narrow lot, front to back. I'm sorry, side to side it's narrow. It's long, front to back. Town center setbacks are eight feet from the sides, and so they're asking for a foot on each side.
Any problems you can see or any concerns so far?
None.
Anybody have any opinion on this one? Is that a going down?
Second one is a special exception, lot number five oh eight, application submitted by Crete Co Lodge LLC for a special exception to permit a live outdoor entertainment. This property is located at nineteen six thirty-eight Garrett Highway, tax map fifty-eight, parcel seven fifty-four, lot one, grid sixteen, also is owned town center. This is the little Alpine, the old Alpine Village Hotel at the corner of Glendale and Garrett Highway. They state that they want to have like some live outdoor acoustic, like single music.
Anything, anything with this one? Fight the fight?
Well, same. It's a special exception, so it's basically an approved use with, unless it's worse there than anywhere else in the, in zoning. So they may put restrictions or special requirements on it, but...
Anybody have any concerns with this one? Okay, send it on down.
Yeah, just to clarify, the variances, you're not under any compunction to comment on those. The special exceptions, if you, the board does ask for an advisory opinion if you have one, but you can also state that you don't really have any comments too, but it is a little more formal in that case, so.
I'll say it for me?
Yep.
That is, okay. Move up to waiver request for Sleepy Hollow Road Slope.
Yeah, so this one was, I think it was the June meeting, Aaron came and presented a waiver request for a road slope, and at that time, I believe, the Plan and Commission chose not to vote on it at that time, wanted to get a little more information, asked for the, asked Aaron to contact the owners and see how that went, see if there's any way to alleviate the slope, so they're here with a follow-up to that.
So John, you want to talk about the contacting your owners first?
Yeah, I reached out to the owners as best I could. Googled them, found several mailing addresses in Ohio, Florida, et cetera, found several email addresses and phone numbers, mailed letters, they're, yeah, I've got copies, you guys want to see them. Mailed letters on their addresses, emailed on their email addresses, most of them bounced back, left voicemails and messaged on phone numbers, and zero. So, I've tried, the best I can track them down is, they are from Ohio. I've got a P O box, three, two, one, Martin's Ferry, Ohio. I don't think they live there anymore. Also found more what I think recent addresses are from Naples, Florida. But anyway, a short story, I have zero.
So will you kind of explain what your plan is, Aaron, to clarify?
So basically, we developed a plan and profile to try and determine if we stayed within the limits of the fifty-foot right-of-way, how much could we alleviate that road slope? So instead of being, I think, the existing road slope right now is about seventeen point eight, and if you see on that road plan, you can see that the limits of the grading right there where it goes through parcel C and up into the German piece, which would be in here. You can see the proposed grading is basically maxing out inside the right-of-way, right about there. Then we can get down to about fifteen point four percent slope, which is pretty much all you're going to be able to do in, and stay within the right-of-way. If we can't get any permission from the adjoining, then we're going to have to basically stay within the right-of-way, so we can get down to fifteen point four percent slope, about in there. My only concern when I sent the letter was, if you notice the top of it, where we're saying we're going to have to have two point nine feet of cut, in my request I said sixteen because I'm not sure how hard the rock is going to be there. Let's face it, there's a reason there's a knob there. We might be able to take like a foot and a half or something off without having to resort to blasting or anything, might get harder as it gets deeper. So I was like, listen, if we could go to sixteen, maybe do a little bit more fill at the bottom, you know, but if we could get a road waiver to sixteen, I think we could probably do this within, within the right-of-way limits and still have a good access for the property.
So the right-of-way is fifty foot?
Yes.
So everyone involved? Well, I, like, okay, that's good.
Go ahead.
So after we had the last meeting, I wouldn't have been there. It's, yeah, I wouldn't take your truck from there unless you really liked your truck, and I don't care. I went all the way to the top.
Oh, did you? It was pretty rough.
Yeah, well, it's no steeper there than it is for me to get out. There, I got, I got plenty of other P R D, which is back in the back. I bet I have three slopes that are steeper than anything that I own up there.
Well, and it's like...
In my opinion, if it's paved, I, but I think it'd have to be paved from there, clear, clear to the top, where it levels out. I don't know what the, that's, that would be my only recommendation. I'm fine with the road, but if you can work it down and, and it has to be paved from beginning to end, you know, to the least to the top part, then after that, that'd be, I'd be okay. That's me. With my own eyes going up it. I mean, you have to go slow because you might ball them out.
Right, right, right.
You might ball them out, yeah, if you're not careful. But other than that, it's no steeper than where I was at.
I've rode out that whole lot, done it a long time, so.
Yeah, it's just washed out, and I know what you're saying about the rock face, there's certain points out there, I, yeah, you're gonna, you'd have to blast it, it's not going to be, get graded out. It's not shale rock, it's very solid.
Do you, have you talked to the county whether they're planning the access up on the top, or the...
They don't really seem to have any plans to access the water tank up on top. Like, I don't know why they had an expiring easement on that anyway, because right now they have a water tank up there, if there's problems, they're going to have to get a new easement to get back up the road. You thought they'd just kept the easement they were going to use and have permanent access for it. They don't seem to have any real...
They haven't even accessed into that at all?
No. No.
So I've spoken to the county about the water tower too, and I have no clue how they work, but I'm assuming the county is going to need to get there at some point in time for something, and they could absolutely have an easement over it, but there's not one existing that we can buy.
Yeah, the first one they got in order, where they said they had to fix the road enough and access through it, I think it had like a hundred and eighty day expiration or something. So there was a limited timeframe where they could use it, as long as they maintained it, and then it went away. And I don't think that there's actually a good access through Ridgeview to get to that water tank either, it's kind of setting up at the top of the hill.
You would say it's set there very out, I mean, it's kind of all by itself with no...
Yeah, pretty much.
I'd read that, because I went in the other way and I couldn't...
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, like, the best way to get through, because you could drive right up to the water tank.
Right.
On Sleepy Hollow Road, but the county doesn't have an easement over it, and like I said, I don't know why they did an expiring one, so like, getting this road fixed up would be to the benefit of the county.
That's why I asked that question, if you, if somebody in the county was going to assist it and get it to that point, you know what I mean, so. Okay, so we have a request to waiver to sixteen percent of the way here, and try to do better, I guess. Chad, how do you wish to handle that, as far as, does the, the road will have to be built to the subdivision standard or not at that point?
Well, it'd still meet, need to meet the other subdivision standards, you'd be granting a waiver that it would not meet the slope requirements.
Okay.
And what is it, there are fourteen percent that has to be paid, or...
Yeah, that's right now. You can go up to fourteen percent for a maximum of ten lots if it's paved right now, so you'd be granting a waiver to allow up to...
From fourteen to sixteen?
The request, does a grant of waiver allow up to sixteen percent on a paved road serving ten lots?
We have a call in there to ten lots?
Well, yeah, right now, all we're trying to do is, what prompted this is, Steve Green wants to do is the lot line adjustment for below the road, and there's one lot that wants to get a piece of property above this road. So Steve Green can't get his piece because that takes the road frontage away from the lot, so we have to extend the road up to the, what will be the residue after Steve Green gets his lot line adjusted. And then that'll also provide frontage for this proposed eleven acre lot up there.
Do you have any issues, other than we talked about the safety issue?
Yeah, I think that we...
And you, you will have control over the permitting and how the road gets...
They would have to actually submit a plan to me, they'd have to have a road plan that's reviewed and approved, and at that point, you know, would have to meet all the subdivision standards except for anything that you would waive, and then, you know, that's the condition.
Any other opinions here? Jim?
I don't believe...
Liz?
Don't have any issue with...
Jeff?
How, how do those standards change after town halls? Like, then it gets down to twelve?
Yeah, so it, it's supposed to be twelve, and then there's more or less kind of a waiver built into the ordinance that says if you tar, chip, or pave, you can go up to fourteen percent as long as you're not serving more than ten lots.
Okay, so...
So that's, that's written into the ordinance.
Anything beyond that, the variance would hold?
Well, if you do more than ten lots, they just have to be twelve.
Yeah, of course.
Typically, that's the way the subdivision ordinance is written. So it's, it's almost like a written-in exemption in the ordinance to do a little steeper for paving.
We still got to have to pave, you know, or the tar and chip to sixteen percent, right? I mean, that's, that's given.
Yeah, I think that should be, but at the very least, I don't think we can, we should waive that part. It's up to you if you want to give another two percent and say, okay, you can allow up to ten lots on fourteen, or...
Is that the, is that the whole road, the top to bottom?
I was also going to say, is that, would we have to pave just the sections that are in between twelve and fourteen? Because you could do gravel up to twelve. So could we do anything that's between twelve and sixteen would have to be paved, or do we need to do the whole thing? I mean, that's my question. Is this like a contingency for the approval, or...
That will be, that's up to you. I mean, the way the ordinance is written now, you pave the sections that are over...
Fourteen percent or higher.
Between twelve and fourteen, it's up to you if you want to follow suit with that or require the entire, I mean, that, that's up to you if you want to put other conditions on it.
I mean, how, how do you feel about that, Jeff? Do you think it needs to be paved all the way up? You were, you wrote up, but I mean, I've, I've been up before, but it's... I mean, the way, what you understand, the ordinance is going to say anything that's above...
There's that long stretch where it's just a long stretch, to me, I'd build the whole thing, but they have to be paved. I mean, if you're getting a fire truck up there, just running on gravel road, that's going to be, that'd be a little tough.
And when I say paved, the ordinance does specify either asphalt or tar and chip, so, either, both of those are acceptable in the subdivision.
So it can be tar and chipped or...
Or paved, yeah, that's what they say in the current exemption to go on fourteen percent.
Which is, well, no, the ordinance says anything, it's over twelve percent has to be paved, that's what they're asking, they only have to pave the areas that are twelve percent or more. That's the way I understand it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, according to the ordinance, that's what they'd have to do, right, Chad?
Yes, if they were...
Hey, Chad, could you throw the, the map back up? Maybe Aaron could point out those areas less than twelve?
Well, say for instance, like, once you get onto the property, you've got a steeper section here, but you've got a substantial section here that wouldn't have to be paved, I mean, you're talking several hundred feet, but, I mean, that's just to get over, our subject property is here. We had done a profile for the whole thing all the way to the top of the hill going up, so this comes up through the lots, flattens out a little bit, and then has a steeper section until it gets up on the property, and then it kind of flattens out a little bit as it goes up above. I'd have to go back and look at the full-length profile to see how much we're talking about.
How about the other map?
Oh, it's only for that section too?
Yeah, so...
See, it just goes up to the property line.
So you're talking about, on that map then?
Yeah, you're only, you're only talking about a couple hundred feet that you wouldn't have to pay in this low section, but when you get from here, you know, all the way up to where it turns at the water tank, that's like three thousand and some feet. I think you're like thirty-three thousand, thirty-two hundred to get up, because I think it's like Station Forty-seven Hundred up at the bend.
And the slope there is less than twelve, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's, I'm pretty sure there are sections, substantial sections that are less than twelve. You know, I, I have to go back to the original profile to look and see, because we were only worried about the sections that were going to apply for the waiver that we were...
Just to clarify, you've got two hundred and forty-five acres total? So if you create, I know you're going to do a lot line adjustment, I think that's in this area?
Yeah, parcel right here.
Um, you'll still have a substantial chunk of property up there if you're only developing ten lots, is that going to be an issue with, what happens with the rest of that acreage?
Well, big, David, you're going to be limited to doing ten lots on it unless you end up getting ahold of the adjourn, you know, these owners down here and get it down to twelve.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was clear, that this will limit the future use of those two hundred and forty-five acres.
So this is granted, sorry, this is granted today, there's ten lots, and then if we happen to get ahold of the homeowners and they agree to it, then we can come back.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was clear.
And that's Steve Green, Steve Green's property there?
Correct.
Okay.
That, that's a question I had, does Steve Green's lot line adjustment count as one of the ten, or is that a lot line adjustment?
No, because it's, it's just taking the frontage away from this lot.
Yeah, it's not a lot being accessed by this, he's just getting extra acreage, and the plat will say it's not a separate lot, but acreage being added to this.
And there's also the potential, like, we've been talking about the, trying to get, coming in off the limousine ridge where there used to be a road, and the people in that area are not as cooperative towards getting an easement traffic through that. And it might also be that when Ridgeview Valley, Ridgeview Valley gets developed, roads that are going up to the, proposed roads that are going up to the water tank might be able to come out and onto this property, and then you'd have an alternative access that meets the twelve percent. So I think basically we're kind of handcuffed into the ten lots until we can get twelve percent access somewhere.
Everybody understand it? Any comments?
Well, I'm thinking it's ten percent up.
What's that?
Ten percent slaping up. I'm thinking once you start to get into the bigger section, I need just a little bit of run to get to, is that...
Do you want to make a motion?
I'm going to move that we go ahead and go for the special exception up to the sixteen percent of the slate, being paid from ten percent going up for this slate. Unless somebody wants to adjust it.
Everybody okay with that?
Have to do it by twelve percent, right?
Yes. Twelve to fourteen would typically...
Same, if we're going to make the special exception, we have to take a little bit, like, ten percent up, have that part paid. Anybody have any idea what I'm saying?
Comments, Liz?
All right, so clarify for me, I'm sorry, what you're saying? Is it not twelve, it's ten?
No, the law says twelve, but I'm thinking if we're going to do a special exception, because if you're kind of getting around for the, the next hill coming up, have it paid from ten percent up.
So you're going to make it stricter on them than what the law says?
Paying part, if we're giving up on the other end of the slate.
I would just stick with the law.
Just stick with the law and make it easy? Okay.
That's what I would do.
Clarify, you're making a motion to approve the waiver with the caveat of ten percent, anything above ten percent to be paid?
After the split, we'll just keep it at twelve.
I would keep it with what the law is, make it consistent.
Okay.
Okay, so, so twelve percent up will be paid, all right. Everybody understand it? Waiver, motion to approve the waiver with the caveat of twelve percent and up, and according to the, the ordinance, it's, it gets paid. That's your motion, five seconds.
Five seconds.
Any further discussion? So moved, or, all in favor? All opposed? So moved, waiver granted. All right? Okay, thanks, Liz. Okay, when, um, what we got next, major sub to do?
Yeah, Aaron's here, so we, you know, if he has anything to add about that, let me put this one up. So this is Highland Adventures Eco Village. Let me put this up for a little bit.
Yeah, and it's a little odd, because really what we're doing is a condominium, but because the condominium is within the PRD, we're having to do this as a major subdivision because of the PRD. So what we're talking about doing is, right up, I don't know where you guys are, here are the big propane tanks on Wisp Mountain. So here's that big, you know, curve right after the propane tanks. We're wanting to put fifteen condominium units down through here. These are the boxes that define what the units are going to fit within. We've got a couple different building plans of what they want to do, those building plans are going to need to fit within the limited common elements, and like, down here to Southern, and Chad had some concerns about units six, seven, and eight where the thirty percent slopes are, where we'll just have to employ a different, you know, the smaller footprint to reduce our impact in thirty percent slopes. And we may shift those common elements around to pull it back off of the thirty percent, but the plan is, get the preliminary plat approved. We've already got the road plan approved, we're working on the stormwater plan. Then we'll go ahead and do the building permits, build the units, as-built the units, and the phases, whether we do it in multiple phases or one, will be based upon the as-built of each unit. So we don't have to worry about, you know, where the condo is going to be, it's going to be based upon the as-built, so they can then... Their plan right now is to basically rent these units. We're only setting it up as a condominium, so in the future, if they want to sell them, they can do so. Right now, they're planning on just building everything, but because it's in the PRD, the only way we can get all of this approved and ready to go is by setting up a condo plat.
As, as Aaron mentioned, since this is a condominium, typically this wouldn't come before you, because there's not technically a subdivision occurring, the property is going to remain as the one eight acre piece, there'll be common elements around these, these units. But since it's in the Wisp PRD, the, the procedures state that all plats are all development in the PRD has to follow subdivision procedures and come to all of you, and that's what we've done the past, with Kendall Camp, some other elements of the, of the PRDs have been done like that. This is only about eight acres, I believe?
Seven.
So, seven acres, so they're able to take advantage of the Wisp PRD and get fifteen units, so that's, you know, if they did a typical subdivision at Lake Residential Standards of one unit per acre, they could do that, but if they want to take advantage of the, that overall PRD development that allows for more flexibility on each section, then they have to follow the PRD requirements. Again, this would just be for preliminary. I had concerns about these steep slopes, the fact that they're going to build the units first and actually do a plat, they'll bring those back for final, once they do that, that alleviates some of those concerns. I didn't want just a random person getting this limited, up to this element, and then trying to build in there and having problems with the steep slopes, but if they're going to build it first, they can have a little more flexibility and it'll be recorded, and we'll deal with that. So that, that allevia, I still have concerns about it, but that, that alleviates some of my concerns, that they're going to build them first before we ever do a final plat.
Ever been to Sevier County, Pigeon Forge? They'll build anywhere. He can have a fire truck.
Morgantown builds, Morgantown builds anywhere.
He does.
Morgantown, you don't have, you don't have to go that far.
Look my whole map and call, kind of, the shop, et cetera.
We try to set a higher standard here.
It's funny, because after we had the one meeting, I was looking online at different road trips, right? So like, you know, down here at Chief, Steve coming up the segment, well, that's like nineteen percent, so it's paved, but it's also in the section. So I looked online, and the city of Portland allows up to eighteen percent for streets, and twenty-two percent if the fire chief were using it instead of, instead of, this is public safety, and I'm just like, whoa. That's pretty steep.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody understand what they're proposing here? Everybody good with this? This is the preliminary, right?
This is just preliminary, so it's still, you know, we don't have signatures yet, there's still overall concerns about water service and stuff, but we'll, before we would bring a final plats to you for this, those will all have to be answered.
All right, any motion?
I'll make the first one here, but...
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? So moved.
I have to abstain because I'm doing the legal work on this.
Yeah, so the condominium docs or something will have to be submitted. Typically, we ask for HOA docs, and the road's going to be in a, a right-of-way, this one's a little different, because all that property is owned in common, so they will be handled through a condominium documents, so be prepared, so.
All right, now, moving to the poll and run.
Yeah, that one I did, I withdrew that one, because it came in, there's open space that needs to be recorded, and they didn't have the open space plat, and the plat wasn't signed, so I told them they needed to wait till next month.
Everybody look at this one?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll bring that one next month.
Okay. All right, moving on, right?
Yep, so next is Sierra, she's going to present the draft local roadway safety plan.
You have the screen for me?
Yeah.
Can you, like, do anything?
It's on that one. You can come here and do it here if you want.
Aw, man. I had trouble last time. So this is laptop HMI one, laptop one?
I just have a choice for presenter laptop, so I have, so. You can plug in here and do it here.
Sure. Let's do that.
Do you just have your plan, or do you have anything else?
Huh, I, I have the slideshow.
Okay.
I didn't like spend time making a slideshow, if you guys can get the video. This doesn't mean I have to take over, do I? Aw, no. Let's see here. Which one?
Ministerator laptop.
Oh, right, uh, which one? Oh, this guy?
Push it real good.
Okay. Hey, it might work, I have like seven, this should be a little interesting. Hey, oh, really? That's bizarre. No controls to manage. All right. I don't like when it doesn't work. Well...
You may want to be an opener?
Here, I'll send you a link, yeah.
Okay.
Aw, man, this is...
Hold for technical difficulties. Looks like her coo to oust you from your seat of power, is it a snack? Yeah.
All right. Tell me if that'll work for you, and I'll go back over to my spot. Does anybody? Okay, sure. Did you get it? I have like five seconds, I'm waiting now. All right. Well, I'll just, oh, okay. Does anybody want a copy of the plan? I have two printed out, if anybody's interested.
Take one. I, I have mine.
Ah, okay.
Chad, you need one? Yeah, if you need one.
Sure. All right, well, thank you for... Keep giving. And I just closed my machine. It's like, I'm like, I'm not supposed to share this. It's because you have a lot on your agenda, isn't it?
Yeah.
Let me send that, try again, on that link that I'm... Let me send that, try again, on that link that I'm using.
Required to have a plan, is that what you need?
What's that?
Is this required?
It's, uh, it's not, well, it's recommended, uh, and it's required if you want to do other stuff. So, I, I'd like to do some other stuff and get some other things, so... Anyway, oh, thank you. All right, present. Cool, okay, so, this is the Garrett County Local Highway Safety Plan. Uh, I'm Sierra Wakefield, Senior Planner. So, this, uh, plan was, uh, from a grant from the Maryland's, um, Office of Highway Safety. Um, we actually got a grant to do both a plan for Allegheny and Garrett Counties. They're only two counties, and Maryland doesn't have a local highway safety plan, so we'll be able to say we have these plans. Um, the state has a highway safety plan, uh, this is the link to the most recent update. The goal of the plans are to, like, uh, reduce fatalities and injuries on our road, or, like, no roadway. It's like, I think in the past, there's always going to be accidents, and like, it's costly to, uh, change that. But I think the mindset has changed in terms of thinking those crashes and thinking those preventable. A lot of them are behavior things, like, you choose to go too fast, or, you know, you, you were distracted by your phone. Um, so, or like impaired driving. So, um, there's some choices that we have in that, and as well as this provides, like, some of the behavioral changes, as well as like infrastructure changes, so... Um, so, the purpose of this plan is to reduce injuries and get to like zero deaths. I think we have a target by twenty forty to get to zero deaths on the roadway. Um, so, this, like, so, I'm at the point where we want to engage with community stakeholders and make sure that our plan covers our bases. This will be updated regularly based on new statistics and, um, after we've implemented some of these other, uh, changes. So, first, uh, we took a look at some data, um, over the last past five years. We identified the high injury network, so the roadways that, um, we see that wrecks are more prevalent. And then visualize them, and then figure out those key contributing factors. Um, and then I used the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee, which is a mix of like the Health Department and EMS, um, the towns' police and sheriff and state highway. Um, they meet on a regular basis, so I use that group as our stakeholder group, as well as like the Board of Education. Um, so, we did a kickoff meeting with them. They were individually interviewed, and like, some of, some themes came out of that in addition to the analyzed data. So, now I'm working on the community engagement side of things, so we're going to make sure that there's plenty of feedback, um, from the community. All right, so this over the, this is the cumulative totals, so like the past five years, like, there was a total of twenty-four, um, two thousand four hundred fifty-seven crashes in Garrett County with thirty fatal, uh, fatal crashes. And then, like, compared to Maryland, like, if, I was trying to scale these dots to make them, like, proportional, but the Garrett County dot, you cannot see if I would, like, draw that. So, there's, these are not to scale. But, um, Maryland, as a state, there's a lot more injuries than in Garrett County, and even Allegheny County's statistics are much higher than ours, just because of our, like, traffic flow and the number of people on the roads, so... Um, but we had, over those five years, uh, each year we lose seven people, which is seven too many. That's, you know, a lot of these things can be prevented, so, we're working on that. Here's a map of the hotspots for where the crashes happened, clearly, like I sixty-eight and two nineteen, but there's also some hotspots along, um, one thirty-five, which I think is kind of interesting. And definitely in Oakland, so, like, really a hotspot there. Um, these are the contributing factors, so, um, I have for Alle and in Garrett Counties, this is some data that our consultants pulled up for both of them. It's kind of nice to compare, so, um, out of, in this five-year span, three hundred accidents were involved in animal, like deer, um, and vulnerable users. We definitely have less, but I think we have less pedestrians and less, um, of that going on in Garrett County, so that's why comparatively to Allegheny County, impaired driving, uh, with a hundred and forty-six accidents. And then, uh, the commercial vehicles was two hundred and thirty-five. Uh, and then this was kind of, uh, fatal crashes and also like roadway networks that were, um, where fatal crashes happened. And one thirty-five looks like a real hotspot. Um, and then this is our high injury network that we've developed for, um, this plan. And then these are some of the roadways on that high injury network. Some of these were not a, like, most of these weren't a surprise to me. So, the leading causes and contributing factors for it, like, this is, what is KSI? It was killed or seriously injured in crashes, um, which were behaviors. Um, so, either on people under the influence, distracted driving, speeding. Um, so, education and enforcement are like our biggest tools to help, uh, solve those issues. So, this plan ha, brings about like four emphasis areas where we can, um, target our attention so we can reduce these fatalities. Uh, the first emphasis area is to reduce the risk of roadway departure and head-on collision. So, forty-three percent are, um, of the crashes that we analyze were either falling off the roadway or head-on collisions, which, like, those are very dangerous. So, um, one of the things we'd like to do is conduct highway safety office, like roadway audits on those high injury networks. Um, so that's some grant funding that I might pursue through the Highway Safety Office, um, or some other programs. Um, uh, put in some low-cost, like, countermeasures, which, like, reduce, uh, the speed signs that make you speed aware with like the numbers on them. That's one of the things that you could do, rumble strips to people, prevent people from crossing the lines, as well, as well as guardrails, so those are some, like, low-cost countermeasures. Um, and then I actually applied for the Safe Streets For All using this Highway Safety Plan draft, um, addressing some of the issues that we had in Oakland, in particular, with like the pedestrian and, um, and the car kind of conflicts, plus the freight going through town. Um, and then develop a pedestrian safety plan for one thirty-five that should be kicking off soon, so... Oh, and then I found a typo, so, awesome. Um, anyway, so the other part is address the unique safety issues in mountainous terrain. So, we have weather, and we have, like, you know, hills and other things that we need to address. So, a lot of the issues were, um, some of the three-headed crashes were contributed from animal crossings. So, um, we actually talked to DNR and, um, like their Wildlife and Fisheries Department, as well as like some farmers and things, and I don't know if there's anything more that we can do to control the population, or to keep that, or provide different animal crossings. There is some funding, um, for wildlife crossings for bigger highways. Um, I don't know if there's a good opportunity for us there, uh, but that's something we can definitely look into. The other thing that came up that our EMS, like, their response times are, like, there's funding issues with EMS and volun, and volunteer fire companies, so providing more support to them so they can get to, um, our, any sort of crashes and responses. And then winter weather challenges, that's like something we just deal with. And, um, but also trying to notify people to not drive and can, like, you know, cancelization, cancel things or hold things remotely during, uh, those weather challenges. Um, and then increase the emergency management capacity was another, um, some feedback we got from our stakeholder groups.
You've got a bull deer on there, southern whitetail.
Oh, okay. I was wondering, like, that didn't look like a whitetail deer, but that was the best picture I could find today. So, I'll update that, thank you. Making sure you're still awake. Um, so, anyway. Then the other part was reducing speeding, aggressive driving, and distracted driving. Um, so, reduce posted speeds in the high injury network, so on those, and that map of like one thirty-five and other areas, um, we could reduce the speeds, um, for, form a speed enforcement task force. Um, consider speed enforcement cameras, there's some interesting programs out there, um, that is actually, the speed enforcement cameras have shown to be one of the best, because like, once people have to pay, they are less likely to do it again. Um, and then, you know, strict adjudication for egregious speeding cases. So, really provide some consequences to speeding. Uh, and then lastly, protect our vulnerable users, so like build out our bicycle network, develop that safety plan for one thirty-five, invest in like quick build safety measures, like whether it's sidewalks or, um, other things that keep people safe, um, providing some barriers between bicycle and pedestrians in the roadway. Um, and then document these, uh, and improve the roadways and trail crossings. So, uh, engaging the community, this is like one of the public outreaches that I'm doing for this project. Um, so, I'm also presenting the same presentation at the planning, at the commissioners' meeting on September third. So, I'm looking for feedback from people. They can email me, they can also call me, but it's nice to have it in writing, so then we can incorporate it in the plan. Um, so, perhaps another thing we could do is work on a map, so if there's like hotspots where people have concerns, see if that comes up, um, that's kind of on my radar as well. So, any questions, comments?
I had a lot of work went into it, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I'm really happy with how it turned out, so...
I have a dumb question, find another going to be popular question. Did you check on resident versus non-resident act?
I don't have, like, I, that's not in the crash data, unfortunately. I'm, I bet if you dug in there, but sometimes the crash data, they have it really limited, because they try not to target people, so then, like, so what if you are a drunk driver, then I can't go after you to see, like, you know, to, you know, so they're, like, so that, like, so... Yeah, so sometimes we protect the people who are, uh, involved in the crashes. So, it's hard to say, but it would be interesting to see. But, uh, in that highway, in the network, actually, like, it wasn't too bad, um, like the, in the all crashes. Like, you have some hotspots up and around, like McHenry, just like a little bit, so, I'm curious.
It just seems like, to be honest with you, it just seems like with the traffic increased when these last six, yeah, three or four months, you'd think it'll be higher, which is really...
I'm actually curious, let's see what this map looks like now that Oakland, like, between all of the London gas work and the bridge being out, it's kind of interesting, so, yeah, so...
Looks like it's like mainly in that gauntlet area.
Yeah.
McHenry.
Yeah. So, uh, but I'm working, like, trying to get some funding for an active, like, transportation plan, and maybe we can address, like, connecting those trails and keeping people safe, and also maybe, um, some road diet options, because there's a lot of pavement in that area, which causes a lot of people's speed, so...
I'll tell you what, it's interesting to see, to study, to, I mean, you don't realize that until you see what the numbers are.
Exactly, so... Anything else? Anybody?
Very good.
All right, well, I look forward to like emails and comments, and, uh, the deadline for comments is September eleventh, and then, um, the hope is to incorporate those, um, and then we'll have the commissioners adopt the plan, we'll have, uh, highway safety plan, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chad, for letting me use your laptop.
That it, Chad?
Yep.
All right, well, you're in the meeting, we'll see you on September four.
I will say first, um, a lot of the stuff we do is collaborative in the office, but Sierra thinks we need on these things, especially by herself, so, this transportation priority plan, it's usually something Sierra's doing, so, give her a lot of credit.
Yeah, good, thank you.
All right, next time, September fourth. Right?